The next question. In your past or current professional experience, what criteria do you use to make decisions about budget constraints? We'll start with Mr. Moses.
So as an engineer and a business owner, I review budgets all the time. And I ask myself, is this feasible? What are the outcomes that come out of this project or this program? I will also consider historical trends and look at the research and what research says about this program. And then also consider the human factor to ask others who are the constituents of what they think of this issue. And being here with the overcrowding issue and looking on how the district handled taking in the concerns of people and residents, I believe that it was handled very well, but I think it could have been handled much better.
Thank you. Ms. Pirelli?
Well, I think that there's always going to be budget constraints, whether it's in your household, whether it's a school district, whether it's a college. And I think first and foremost, you have to prioritize, which is a major part of strategic planning. And then also, we need to research new revenue streams or continue to ask for grants, apply for grants. I know that the foundation on the college as well as P-12 is very helpful in raising funds. And I know the PTA does a great job at giving us student supplies and so forth. And I know your goal is to reach 80,000 for 2018, 2019. So all these extra revenue streams can only help when there's budget constraints.
Thank you. Mr. Thorpe?
As a financial advisor, I'm talking with people constantly about their own budgets and how they have to plan for their goals. So it's an item that's very near and dear to my heart. A very large percent of the money that we get goes into the infrastructure and to the contracts for the employees. So there's not a lot of wiggle room left over for us to try to add things. We've been able to add these additional classrooms to Dearborn High because, again, of the new millage from Wayne County. But that's a temporary fix. We need to make sure when we've got these millages that we're not getting used to living on them, so that when they go away, we'll be able to adjust back down, both at the college and the P-12 level. We've done a great job rebuilding the rainy day funds.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
In my understanding, the school system is missing a lot of services, including counselors and also social services staff. And I know our budget is very tight and we need to look into our budgets and we need to find a creative way to come up with a solution. And there's a lot of solutions, such as networking or like building relationship or anything that help us to support and have our children secured and successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
In my profession now, working for a nonprofit, a budget is a daily conversation. We make decisions on a daily basis where we meet with our admin team, let it be an hour meeting or a six-hour meeting. We go down, we go through, what does a need be? What does it not need be? What do we have to focus on? Where do we have to push money towards? And we make the cuts that are needed. And I understand that sometimes it can affect certain situations. But at the end of the day, we have to focus on who we're serving, which is our kids, which is the youth of the community, and we do what's best for them.
Thank you. Mr. Alziger?
Yes. As an education consultant at WISO, we always have this question of what do we do when the budget constraints force us to change the way we do business and we work with the district? And so the number one, as Roxanne said, or I think, I think, I'm not sure who has had the prioritize, prioritizing is very important. And this is based on what is the dire need? Look at the needs and see what needs to be done first. But at the same time, we need to look at transparency and accountability. Are we doing the things the way, the best way to do it? Is there a way to have more money but, and alternative, look at alternative funding from a business community and/or reduce special interest when we do the funding? And we don't want that effects of special interest.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
So criteria for budget constraints, the first thing is that state law requires a balanced budget. So, but at the same time, we just had a study in our state and we buy a nonprofit or a nonpartisan group, which tells us that we need to be funding students at $9,500 per student per year. In Dearborn, we're getting about $8,500, so we're under. So we have a balanced budget and our budget, I believe, reflects, it's aligned with our priorities, which are classroom teachers and the instruction that goes on in the classroom. That's 85% of our budget, so there's not a lot we can do. But we do try to plan for unexpected small disasters. We have a fund balance, which is pretty good at this point. I try to look for, around for advice and seek professional advice. I think of the pros and cons and then I try to raise my voice for those priorities which we as a district have set. That's my criteria.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Well, I worked, like I said before, in the hospitality field, including management. We looked at budgets all the time. And again, running a household, you look at budgets. So it's just something that everybody does on an everyday basis. But running the schools, you have to keep certain things in mind. Again, you prioritize, you prioritize things that are most pressing, but also school safety, anything that affects the students, you have to put as a top priority. One thing that we have to keep in mind is we cannot take advantage of the generosity of our residents. They are very generous, they pass bonds, they've helped us with so many things. So when we do need some help from them, we have to consider what is most important. You have to weigh alternatives and which one makes the most sense. Another thing that you want to keep in mind, it's rare, but because we work on both boards, you always have to consider if a decision that you're making for one institution, how it's going to affect the other institution. You have to know which hat you're wearing.
Thank you. Moving on to question five. Serving in the Dearborn Board of Education also couples with the responsibility of serving on the Henry Ford College Board. How will you effectively serve both while working with two different budgets? We'll start with Ms. Pirelli.
Well, when working with two different budgets, there has to be some compartmentalizing just to keep everything straight. But I think that it could be a positive situation as well because you're able to compare costs and perhaps you can find where, could do some revenue sharing. I know we've done that in the past and it could be, it could be a positive thing. So I think it would be just a matter of focusing on what it is that you're, the superintendent's budget, president's budget.
Thank you. Mr. Thorpe?
We are unique in that we serve both the P-12 and the college. How I've effectively served on both for the last few years has been to be out there. I've been in every single school building so they know who I am and they're comfortable talking to me and doing the same thing over at the college. Making sure that people know who you are and that they feel comfortable talking to you is incredibly important in my eyes. And then we get a chance to occasionally have those synergies between the two groups to make sure that we can have a seamless transition of our students over to the college.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Okay. If I get elected, we'll treat both of them fairly and make enough research and studies to make sure that I'm fair with both. And also after all that, Henry Ford is the gem of Dearborn, in Dearborn, and we should have the proper staff, funding and resources to have the best education and also in Dearborn schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond?
So when it comes to effectively, effectively serving both the P-12, P-12 and then also the college, it's, comes down to time and careful planning. Again, in my day-to-day life, it's working with, for example, my job and then also working on different boards as far as local mosques where you're planning on different budgets, but both do the same, same type of work as far as outreach. So it's careful planning, it's budgeting, it's focusing on the different issues that the schools, that the schools have to what the colleges have and doing our best to balance the budget and giving the kids the most that we can.
Thank you. Mr. Alziger?
Yes. I think we are a very extremely lucky community here that we have an institution like Henry Ford College as part of the educational system. And I don't see any real conflict in budget-wise between the two. And as a trustee, I can, I can serve both. The only thing I would like to, to look at these two institutions, I would like to see some alignment between Henry Ford College and our school system in terms of curriculum and instruction.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lane?
So we are unique, as everybody has pretty much noted, in being a preschool to higher education district. We're the only one in the state of Michigan, but I think that's a good thing. And what I try to do, I have been serving on the board and I think that I'm able to distinguish them. Their systems are separate, their budgets are separate. So I segment my analysis. We're in a different place, we have different issues. I analyze what's going on at the college, what's working there, what about with the district? I try to join them in formulating solutions so that even though the issues are different, is there a way that we can synergize and cross over such as college readiness from the high school to the college?
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Again, working on both boards, it is a unique situation. I think it far outweighs, the benefits far outweighs any difficulties that is created between the two. The two different budgets, they have different needs. So you have to just analyze the needs of both institutions. In a lot of places, you can bring those together and create synergies and create shared resources or partnerships. We've done that very well in a lot of ways. The seamless education that we're able to offer our students is amazing considering we have the early college program and we have the, also the, oh, thank you, dual enrollment and also there's the academic, it escapes me. My son was the first graduating class of that program too. But all the things that we're able to do, because we are a P-14 district, definitely benefits our students.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
We have a great system. When we are students in the district, utilize the services of Henry Ford. I believe the responsibilities of serving on both is to keep time and dedication to both and understanding the different challenges that our students are having in college and as well as in the district. One of the challenges is to be able to go to Lansing and convince the legislature to give us more funding for the community college. And that's something that I'll be doing from day one.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. Many students choose to forego post-secondary education. How do you recommend we support and prepare those students for the next phase of their lives? We'll start this question with Mr. Thorpe.
Did you answer the last one? You started the last one. Right. I mentioned earlier that there's a lot of students that don't necessarily want to go on to post-secondary education. So what we need to do is focus again on career and technical education. Unfortunately, because the state puts such a high priority on test scores, we've seen some of the shop classes in the high schools start to get converted to regular classrooms. So you hope that we're able to keep those for what they're originally purposed for. Also be able to do a lot of, the academies are starting to roll out in the high schools, starting at Fortson this year. So students have a chance to start figuring out from freshman year on what they want their career to look like. Again, Dearborn has a unique opportunity because we've got things like the Henry Ford Early College, which is kind of second, post-secondary, but they're able to get it done in just five years. So they're jump-started on a career right from their graduation.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
I remember at the age of seventeen, when I was going to my senior year, I used my summer vacation. I gave up going overseas and went and enrolled for a one-month training at the newspaper with 20 students to see if this is what you like to go for a college. I like to see something like that in a school, that they send students at the last year to go and practice and see where they see themselves they are. Because I noticed that the children, when they leave the high school, they only memorize, they do that task and they're done. So when they get to the real life, they don't know nothing. So we need to prepare these children, have a classes so they know what they want, they know which direction. And we, and very important in the school, we have to have the resources equal distributed to all schools and very good quality of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
We all know that HFC is, that enrollment is dropping, HFC. Maybe we need to start focusing on strengthening our student recruitment, our offering different degree programs, examining competitive tuition rates, or looking at enrollment with partnerships with local high schools within the county. Also, along with what Jim said, instructional programs. When I was in high school, we had the auto shop, we had wood shop, we had the cooking classes. And I know many people that I grew up with who went through welding, for example, who are now welding for the UAW or they're working for the Navy and going on to do many different projects. So we need to push those types of programs in for our kids and focus on, you know, the children that are in need.
Thank you. Mr. Alziger?
Yes. So before, before these students forego to post-secondary education, we need to, we need to, again, focus on the college and career readiness and whether or not we're doing the job that we need to do at this level. Based on the latest report from Bridge Magazine, we have 18% college readiness at Dearborn High, we have 14% at Salford, and we have 9% at Fortson. So are we doing what we need to do in order to prepare these students? No. So we need to focus on this. In addition to that, I think that what Jim talked about, the initiative of the academies at Fortson, and that is a great, great start. And we also need to focus on programs and CTE programs at all the high schools to get these, these kids ready before they go to, to develop their career skills.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
I don't have a problem with students choosing a gap year, skilled trades, military, whatever they want to do. I want to be sure, as a member of the Dearborn Board of Education, that they leave here with a grit, with diploma and that they have the highest level of achievement that they personally can achieve. We have so many different students, I'd like them and their families to be able to look at a smorgasbord of educational options and choose which are best for them. Personal finance maybe is better than algebra for engineers. So the more that we can make a personal portfolio, the standard for our seniors leaving high school, that's great. Then they will leave and they will be well-prepared. I'd like to have a seamless transition from our high schools' automatic application, testing, and then enrollment at Henry Ford College.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
I personally know that not, all students are cut out for a traditional college. I have a son, he wanted to go into the military, but prior to going into the military at Salford, he took several years of welding and he loved it. And that's what he likes to do. He likes to build things, he likes to be creative, he likes to feel that accomplishment. And a lot of students are like that. They're not built for sitting in a classroom or sitting in an office space. So we have really good career and technical programs at the Michael Berry Center. We need to expand those and offer more. We also have to make sure that our children are thinking creatively and critically and we can expand apprenticeship programs. My husband is an electrician. He has been able to raise a family very well. For quite some time, I stayed home with the children because the job that he had through skilled trades was enough to maintain our household. And those jobs are out there and they cannot be outsourced overseas. That's a good place for us to focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
Yeah, when I graduated from college, I went back and looked at my Fortson yearbook and I saw many of my colleagues did not go to college. That really saddened me. And I started working. So I started a nonprofit organization that promotes higher education in our community and going to schools and talking to students about my personal experience and also bringing my colleagues and my friends to talk about their personal experiences. College is very important. I think a higher degree will get you somewhere in your life. Not to say now the other trade schools are an option, we should definitely have those options. But I'd like our students to graduate and they have a path. They know what they're doing. And even if they don't know what they're going to be doing, at least have an idea of the programs that are being offered. When I was at Fortson as a Ballarat student, I was not offered those things until my late senior year. I did not know about dual enrollment when I was 12th grade. We need to have, thank you. Mentoring is very important.
Well, I think the greatest program we have to offer is dual enrollment. Students, you know, can earn college credit up to 60 credit hours. Even I know there's been a student, a couple of students that have actually earned their associate's degree while still in high school. And that's no cost to the parent. And I also think that college is not for everyone. And students need to be exposed to other opportunities. To your, well, training programs, apprenticeships, mentoring, perhaps interning at local businesses. Because it's very important to know what you like, but it's also very important to know what you don't like. And I think that exposure is really key.
Thank you. Moving on to our seventh question, our last question. As a school board member, how will you incorporate your constituents and parents when weighing in on key decisions? And what are the factors on which you will base your decisions? We'll start with Ms. Ahmed.
Well, the complaint I've been receiving that since the overcrowding is happening, the students have been sent to further schools and the relationship between the school and the parents is dropping and parents are no longer like before are excited to go to school, attending events, or even been involved in their children activities or see what they're doing. We need to do, we need to make sure how to bring them together. We need to do research, we need to do studies and to see how we can bring everybody together and serve our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond? As a school board member, how will you incorporate your constituents?
So when it comes to incorporating my constituents as far as weighing on the key decisions, it's first focusing on the parents. Town hall meetings, coffee and discussion, they are, we are the voice of the voters. We need to make the decision that's best for them. We have to remember at the end of the day that they are the taxpayers and it's going to be basically a jump for them as well for us. We need to focus on what is the most important for the kids, for the children, for the college, and go from there and understand where our parents and our students are coming from as far as when it comes to the key decisions, let it be a millage or changing of curriculum or just funding for the schools.
Thank you. Mr. Alziger?
Yes. As an educational researcher, the most important factors for me are whether or not this is research-based and data-driven. And when it comes to good decisions, our decisions that are widely and deeply deliberated by all stakeholders. So when it comes to decisions that are affecting our children, our parents, teachers, we need to really widen as much as possible that deliberation process and get the opinion of everybody and especially the PTA.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
Public schools are composed of the public. It's our local community. And I think that we have a job to communicate and communication is a job that's never done. So there has to be a two-way communication. Attending events, board members need to be seen in the community, they need to ask people, what is your opinion? And then need to explain issues to people. This is where we stand, this is what the problem is. One thing, though, I want to caution is that that always has to be done within the framework of our societal, of our public laws. And we have, education law is probably one of the biggest fields in our lives that have laws guiding or restricting what we can do and what we can't do. Additionally, people get caught up in the moment on events, they think that there's an important issue. Sometimes there's information that has to be kept confidential. So that's another balance that a board member needs to make.
Ms. McDonald?
Well, you make yourself visible in the community. I'm involved in so many organizations, I go to events all the time. And you don't have to look for people to talk to you, they will come and find you. You'll be in the grocery store and people come up to me all the time, they still do. And sometimes it's a personal problem with maybe a teacher. In that case, you need to kind of direct them, who they need to talk to, thank them for their input and maybe help them get in touch with that person. But other times, they bring to you thoughts and ideas and things that are bothering them about the whole district. You have to take that in mind. So, so like I said, they will find you, you communicate with the community, you make yourself visible and you make yourself approachable. I think that's very important. Just, I haven't been on the board in a while and just last week I had a young Boy Scout leader call me and asked me, how does he go about renting a gymnasium from his school? So if you're approachable and you're out there, people will talk to you.
Mr. Moses?
Yep. Board members are elected to reflect the voices of their constituents and they should always listen, take in all the opinions and take them into high considerations. If I get elected, that's something that I promise, I'm a great listener and I'm a great doer. So if you raise an issue to me, I'll make sure that it's addressed. When considering issues, obviously, and making decisions, research should be looked at, weighing different options, and most importantly, keeping students first. It's the interest of our students that we're here for and making sure that they are receiving a quality education.
Thank you. Ms. Pirelli?
I think it's very important to communicate with your constituents and your parents, to be transparent with them, to listen to them and to empower them in the decision-making process.
Thank you. Mr. Thorpe?
Once I was elected in 2006, I immediately started visiting all the different buildings in our district. And I heard from some of the staff that they weren't used to that. They were used to only seeing the board members at meetings or at different large public events. So I started to build the rapport with them right away. Last year, when we did the redistricting, we held public forums at all the high schools and middle schools and I attended as most, most of them. And not only did I get a chance to get feedback from people on that issue, but they were bringing up other things like the busing issues and trying to get more community involved and especially over at Salinas since they are bussed over to Edsall. So that's something I'm going to continue doing, being out there in the school buildings.
Thank you so very much. We will move on to the next portion of our forum, our questions from the audience. However, we've had many, many questions from our audience and being that we are, we have time constraint, we're going to ask one question. And once we answer that question, I will ask a few other questions where you can answer on your social media page or if you feel comfortable with that.
I have a question.
Sure.
If we're answering on our social media page, will you put those questions on the PTSA or PTA?
Absolutely.
So we can refer to that?
Absolutely.
In this world of testing, set curriculum and common core, how do you intend to serve our school? I'm sorry. How do you intend our schools to spark students' creativity and inspire critical thinking? We'll start with Afaf.
I believe that the students does not need only to focus on reading and the books. They need to go out and explore to learn better. So we need to find programs, projects, resources that can help our children to be creative and not just book smart. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
With this, I would have to say adequate technology and adequate technology and resources have proven that it's a challenge, they can challenge students in a way where it's fun and can also spark the creativity to keep them going. When I was in high school, I had a teacher, Ms. Boron, at Fortson, and we played a game called World, it was called World Domination. But you had to answer certain questions to move forward in the class. And it was one class that other people would try to get into and it was always full. And I'm talking to the point to where I love social studies because the whole class was basically us going back and forth and it sparked our creativity to keep us focused and keep us working towards the goal, which was world domination and also, you know, being top of the class.
Thank you. Mr. Alziger?
Yes. Yes, I'm a big advocate of art. And unfortunately, we are, there is so much pressure on reducing the art time at school. And I think we need to focus on giving, changing the classroom environment into student-centered, into giving the students the freedom to think outside the box, to have input in how curriculum and instruction at school is being done. Let them have fun. Let the classroom environment be positive, and critical thinking be the center of the instruction.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
I think creativity is part of our human nature at birth, and so schools need to foster that as much as possible. We don't have a lot of time in the day-to-day teaching. But creativity and the performing arts particularly are a massive United States export to the rest of the world. I think it's something we should have more of. We have retained art, music, theater. We have after-school clubs in Dearborn. But all forms of expression should be encouraged. And I'd like to have as much access as possible to the schools' after-hours, libraries. We have one or two grants, like for example, 21st Century Learning, which allows kids even more time.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
The school should be the hub of the neighborhood, and that should be where families come together and things happen. And so I think it is arts and music and all of those things. I think they really stimulate the children to think with the other side of their brain. And they also get children engaged and passionate about something. They might not enjoy sitting through their English class, but if they know that the math, I mean, that music or whatever it is that inspires them is the next class, that keeps them engaged. It keeps them going. Creativity is something that is human nature. You just have to imagine. You start out imagining. And I want to make sure that it's okay for our students to fail. Because when they make a mistake or they fail, that is the best teacher. That's when you learn. That's when you know that you don't do that again. You try something else. You go with a new approach. So we're teaching the whole child, and we're letting them deepen to their creative flows and their imagination. I think that's important.
Thank you. Mr. Moser?
You mentioned sparking for love of reading. And we need to go back to the basics, and making sure that our students are loving the reading. My son, when he goes and picks out the books, he always picks up the books that he really enjoys. And that's something that I always focus on, and making sure that you're loving this area or this type of books. Let's increase that. Let's hone on that. I think most importantly, we need to have schools learning from others. You mentioned standardized testing. We have schools that are outperforming and doing really well, and we have schools that are struggling. So there needs to be a lot of communications between those schools to see the best practices, to have great scores as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perelli?
I'm a big supporter of the arts, music, art. I think it sparks creativity in students. And they look, you know, they're able to be creative in those classes, and then go into their math class. But make math fun. I mean, I have an eight-year-old great niece, and she loves the fun activities. You ask her, what'd you do in school today? And she'll tell you what she drew in art. So those classes are very, very, very important.
Thank you. Mr. Thorpe?
There's a lot of things that are being done in terms of STEAM. I know the Dearborn Education Foundation is making STEAM one of their focuses this year. I know that over the STEM middle school, they're talking about why is it not a STEAM school? And there's been different items going through the district in the last couple of years where they are incorporating more of the core curriculum into these classes. Mathematics in the music classes, science in the art classes. So we're doing a lot, and we have been defending those different subjects when it comes budget time each year.
Thank you. And for the remainder of the questions, I will ask a couple of questions, and you can post it on your social media page. And we will also post it on the PTA website on Facebook page. As a public school district, how do we face the challenges posed by charter schools, public funding to private schools? Can you read it again? As a public school district, how do we face the challenges posed by charter schools, public funding to charter, to private schools? I'm sorry? No, this will be, you can answer this on your social media page, because we don't have time.
The question will be there as well?
Yeah, they're gonna be on the PTA website.
We'll post it. Should I continue reading? Okay. How will you balance your current career and responsibilities with those of this position? As a board member, how will you make yourself available as a mentor to the students and families? Will you be available to make connections with families? What about the gifted children who are not able to go on to higher education because they don't meet the requirements in grades? Can we have a complete grade-free school to support their unique talents without putting pressure on the struggle? What is a solution to overcrowding? Our schools are very diverse and include LGBTQA students. What will you do to protect these students and make sure hate does not hinder their education? During a school improvement visit, there was a parent involvement, there used to be parent involvement. Since they became surprise visits, there is no longer a parent component. What are your thoughts about parents not being involved? I think we're good for that? Okay. The last portion of our forum is our closing statements. You have a minute and a half to answer, or to say your closing statement. We will start with Mr. Thorpe.
Again, thank you for everyone for taking time out of your day to be here tonight. And thank you to all the candidates. Dearborn's really lucky that we've got this many people willing to run for school board, where some communities can't give this either way. I ask for your vote this coming election for a six-year term. I've been endorsed by the Dearborn Federation of Teachers, which is important to me because those are the people who are actually in the classrooms, the front lines for our students and helping them. Like I said, I've been on the board for a couple of years. I've thoroughly enjoyed it, even through all the challenges, and I look forward to continuing to serve in the district. Thank you.
Ms. Perelli?
Yes, thank you all for coming this evening. I also wanted to say that I have been a student, or have worked with students, since 1960 in Dearborn schools, when I was, you know, four years old. And I believe that our student body has changed over the years. And sometimes we responded, well, sometimes not. I believe my 30 years of experience and knowledge will best serve the changing face of our population. I ask for your support on November 6. And I was endorsed by Merrill Riley and the HFCC Teacher Union. Thank you.
Mr. Moser?
I believe that the board needs individuals who are dedicated, who are passionate about higher education. Being somebody who is a first-time generation student, I value education very much. I look forward to reflect your voices, your aspirations, and your concerns about our schools and Henry Ford College. The four areas that I'd like to focus on are student safety, college readiness, technology, integration of our schools. We can achieve these goals by, with being fiscally responsible, through effective and efficient implementation of programs. I look forward to bringing more partnerships between our business neighbors with the continuous cuts to education, and as well as lobbying our state government to bring in more funds to our schools and to Henry Ford College. I'd like the district to have mentoring programs district-wide in all the schools, not just at Edsall Ford, where I started that program with many of my colleagues. We must reach out to the surrounding communities, along with the parents, to actively participate in this educational experience. I've been involved in Dearborn for, in Dearborn schools since I left college, and I'm glad that I am very involved. I taught for three years, so I know the students' concerns, and I'll be their voice on the board. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
I've spent more than 20 years serving the students and the families of Dearborn, and building a stellar reputation, of which I'm extremely proud, because I truly believe that character does matter. I was raised with integrity and a strong work ethic. I take satisfaction in always being professional and prepared. I believe in being a positive example of civility and respect, especially during these turbulent times. Earlier this year, I was honored with the Jean Bressel Community Role Model Award, and in 2016, I was presented with the Michigan Symbol of Excellence in Good Governance. I was also endorsed by the Dearborn Federation of Teachers. There is no question that I am prepared from day one to successfully take on the challenge of serving our community in this crucial role, because I've already done so, and I've done it well. I have a heart for service and a passion for education, because our children deserve the highest quality of education, geared towards critical thinking and creative thinking, and preparing them for a successful future. I applaud all of the candidates here tonight for their dedication and willingness to serve. On Election Day, you have the opportunity to choose two for the six-year term and one for the two-year term. Vote for a proven leader with knowledge and experiment, experience that our students deserve. Vote for Roxanne McDonald.
Ms. Lane?
I'm Mary Lane, and I'm running for the two-year open term on the Dearborn Board of Education, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees. I ask for your vote on November 6 because I have broad life experiences, and I have good decision-making. Among my life experiences are being in a classroom where, when I was abroad teaching. I've lived in other communities. I've seen a lot of things, and I think that I've been a good member of the board so far. I've encouraged simple things, like for example, students reading the commendations. And I've also been involved in more complex decisions, and pushed for more complex programs, such as the Seal of Biliteracy, the interplay between nutrition and recess, Kuramatsu Day. I don't consider myself to be a politician. I consider myself to be an interested, active, involved person. So I plan to continue to support our college and our district, and push forward in the direction that we're going, which I think is positive. And for that reason, I ask for you to vote for Mary Lane for the two-year term, November 6. Thank you.
Ms. Elziger?
Yes, my name is Khalil Elziger, and I'm running for the Board of Education. And I have a long experience as an educator. I'm a committee member on, I'm a member on several committees on, in the Michigan Department of Education, including the Seal of Biliteracy. And I'm a US Army veteran. I have, I'm a former law enforcement officer in the National Guard, as well as in the Dearborn Police Reserve. And we have a great educational system here in Dearborn, and we need to maintain it and shoot for excellence. And I hope that on November 6, you will give me the honor of voting for me to bring an experienced educator's perspective to the floor. Thank you.
Ms. Aiman?
I hope come November 6, you consider Billy Aymond for Dearborn School Board. I've proven myself in the community. I work, I've been working with youth for the last 18 years. My organization has served over 200,000 families and kids. We focus on education. We focus on social services. We focus on athletics. I'm a coach. I'm a mentor. I'm a substance abuse counselor. And my goal is the kids, and always will be the kids. At the age of 19, I started working for them. I haven't stopped since. I'm a proven fighter. We've taken an organization that started out with 100 kids, and we've grown to over, like I said, 200,000. I plan to bring all of that energy and put it into school board, as well as as part of my daily life. The kids are our future. And at the end of the day, if we don't have them, we basically don't have anything. So I hope on November 6, you consider Billy Aymond for the six-year seat, Dearborn School Board.
Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, PTA Council, for holding this forum. Thank you, audience, for attending, and voters for going out to vote on November 6. My focus will be on student safety, overcrowded high schools, and college readiness, and parent involvement. It's beautiful to sit on this chair, but our students are our future, and we must provide everything possible to keep them secure and successful. In November, you have the chance and option to vote for two. Please consider Afaf Ahmed as one of your votes. Always remember those three words that I taught my daughters: dream and believe in your dream. And if I want to start the dialogue, I need your vote to achieve it. Your vote is my endorsement, and children are my first priority. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I have a message from Aman Fadama. She's a candidate for school board. She could not be here this evening due to being ill. I will read that message. Hello, everyone. I am truly sorry I could not attend tonight due to having pneumonia. My name is Aman Fadama. I am married to Walid Fadama. We both have eight beautiful daughters, who some are a product of Dearborn Public Schools and Henry Ford College. I have attended Dearborn Public Schools, attained a GED. I have a community act, I have been a community activist for the last 25 years. I'm a member of the PTA and Secretary for Fortin High School, PTA. I'm a member of the Dearborn Democratic Club and a precinct delegate for District 16. I'm also an active member in the 12th Congressional Democratic District and Michigan Democratic Party, in addition to several community organizations. Thank you.
So Amy, thank you for your message. And for our candidates, we truly humbled and grateful that you were able to be here to share this evening with us and our community. And I'm sure our community learned more about you this evening.
I want to say one thing. I was really impressed with the questions from the audience. They were well thought through. So thank you for that, giving us things to think about, too.
Thank you, Dearborn PTA, for holding this forum. And again, thank you for giving us your time. Think you can relax and smile?
Thank you.